We're going to get started. Welcome to our first board meeting of the 2024-2025 school year. We're going to start out tonight's meeting. We're going to entertain motions to enter executive session.
I'd like to recommend that we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, collective negotiations, and the superintendent evaluation.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. So we're going to enter executive session. We should be out by seven o'clock and we'll resume our meeting then. See you then. Okay, good evening. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. Welcome to the 2024-2025 school board season. We have a lot of things to talk about tonight. Before we begin and start with the public comment, we're just going to see if there are any modifications to the agenda for tonight.
I have a modification I'd like to propose, and that's that I would like to add under new business, 11.3, a commendation of a board member.
The second one?
Second.
All in favor of the proposed modification? Okay. Any votes against? Okay. All right, that is unanimous. So, moving on, we're going to start tonight with a public comment session. I believe, Dr. Tripp, you will be reading the names. Is that correct? Okay.
First up tonight, Carol Cedarholm.
Just to review the rules of the of tonight, so three minutes for public comment. If you're going to come up, please come up and speak into the microphone. There's a warning bell at two minutes to let you know that time is running out. And then another bell that goes off at three minutes. And let's try to, well, keep to the three minutes because we have a lot of people tonight. And we can start.
I'm Carol Cedarholm, a retired ICSD teacher with 32 years of experience. I'm addressing two issues, the adoption by ICSD of Really Great Reading and the apparent discontinuation of Love Those Letters, a program I developed. These changes seem related to the Science of Reading Initiative, which Governor Hochul is promoting. SOAR outlines best practices in reading instruction, emphasizing phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. The New York State Education Department stresses that programs should be systematic, explicit, differentiated, and culturally responsive. RGR claims to align with SOAR principles, but I find it inadequate, especially for younger students and students of color. The program's keyword alphabet is confusing, its videos are poorly animated and unengaging, and some content is culturally insensitive. In addition, the nursery rhymes used to teach beginning sounds "don't rhyme" are long and convoluted with many words that would be unfamiliar to young children. And at least one of these rhymes is very culturally objectionable. In contrast, LTL, which I created during a 2010 sabbatical, has been successfully used in ICSD since its inception. It was made totally locally with students, teachers, community members, and organizations. It features carefully chosen key words, engaging videos, culturally sensitive materials, including a book, classroom materials, and an app. It invites children to learn through song, dance, and sign language. Test data shows improved alphabetic and phonological knowledge in pre-K and kindergarten students using LTL. LTL was designed with children in mind. Recently, the district removed the LTL app from its website without notice. I've since reinstated it at my own expense, and teachers have expressed appreciation for its continued availability. LTL aligns with SOAR principles, being culturally responsive, explicit, systematic, and engaging. It costs the district $850 annually to host the app. I request that the board reinstate Love Those Letters on the district website and reconsider the adoption of Really Great Reading. Both programs could coexist. However, I have serious doubts about the possible success of Really Great Reading teaching young children the necessary literacy skills. I would be happy to discuss these issues further at a district curriculum meeting. For more information, you can access the Love Those Letters app at lovethoselletters.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Yurki.
Good evening. My name is Mike Yurki, and I'm the president of the Ithaca Substitutes Association, or ISA. It was communicated to me that the executive team unilaterally decided to not fill building substitutes positions this year. This seems to go against the publicly stated plan to prioritize labor costs, i.e., personnel cuts, on the administrative side. That's the first three columns in the chart for a total of 22%. You have all these. Rather than in student-facing personnel, which is the last three columns. How much more student-facing can you get than building substitutes who work every day at their schools and now get cut by 100% rather than the originally 8.5 positions presented to the voting public? The public appears to have been misled here and certainly didn't expect such a drastic cut in student-facing personnel. I was also told about the rationale for this decision. The executive team is of the opinion that building substitutes were introduced during COVID when there was a shortage of substitutes. Now, there are many more substitutes on the sub list. As of today, there are 145 on the district's list. And there's less of a need for building substitutes. While this may be true, the fact remains that only a small number of substitutes on the list are subbing regularly, and they do so only occasionally. It also doesn't address the problem of short notice absences due to an emergency like car problems, sickness of a teacher, or their child, et cetera. And no per diem substitute can be found. Exactly one of the reasons the district introduced building substitutes to cover such absences in the first place. I have personally been appraised by ISA members that more than one principal has offered them a role as supplemental or go-to substitutes on a daily or close-to-daily basis at the per diem rate, essentially a building substitute role outside the union contract at far inferior conditions. It shows that the district full well knows that building substitutes are needed, wanted, and necessary, but chooses to engage in what is commonly known as "union busting" with the Ithaca Principals and Directors Association IPDA, Hester Willing-Henchman. I hope that the board disapproves of such improper practice and will do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jean Atkins.
Sorry, by the way. I'm Jean Atkins, vice president of the Substitute Teachers Union. Continuing the letter, we're talking about student-facing personnel. One of the main reasons the district finally introduced building substitutes has always been continuity for students and substitutes. As part of the regular staff, building substitutes actually get to know the students, and the students get to know them, which undoubtedly improves student outcomes during those teacher absences compared to coverage by often unknown per diem subs. Are improved student outcomes of no interest to the executive team, or is it just about dollars and cents? The problem seems to be that the executive team is too far removed from the core job of schools, educating. Consultation with principals, Ithaca Teachers Association, and the Ithaca Substitutes Association would have provided valuable input for a more informed decision, but there was none. Speaking of student outcomes, the lack of building subs will inevitably increase the number of so-called fail-to-fill situations where short notice absences can't be covered by a substitute, so they'll pull a regular teacher away from their prep time. Sacrificing the only prep period to a substitute for an absent teacher? They're doing ISA contractual work at the expense of their well-being and preparation time. The MOA that was signed by the board and the district and the ITA might have been played into the decision not to fill building substitute positions if the executive team thought that the MOA was the ultimate solution to the fail-to-fill problem, that is, having teachers give up their prep times to go substitute. In the MOA, the Article 32D, as in dog, number two, reads as follows. Building leaders will determine the priority of needs for the building and work with the building substitutes and educational support professional staff to provide coverage. That is most supportive to students before requesting any teacher's cover. Well, if there aren't any building substitutes, how's that going to work out? As you can see, building substitutes are supposed to be the first line of defense. By not filling the substitute positions at all, the same MOA seems to be the result of some serious, bad-faith negotiations, which would be grounds for litigation in every possible way. Again, there will be more fail-to-fill situations, meaning there's no sub, there's nobody to take the class, because there aren't any building substitutes available. Thank you. Thank you.
You get one more. You have one more minute. You still have one minute left.
Yeah, I have a whole nother minute. I didn't know. See, I didn't know. Again, there will be more fail-to-fill situations since there aren't any building substitutes available, and those more fail-to-fill assignments lead to less prep time and more dissatisfaction and burnout among classroom teachers. How far are you going to push them? Where they don't have any time at school to do anything except what they're told to do. Burnout dissatisfaction with implications for hiring and retention of educators and student outcomes. If word gets out that teachers have to sub because there aren't any subs, that word will get out. And I appreciate you listening and considering the impact of this unfortunate administrative decision.
Zelda Blain.
Hi. My name is Zelda Blain, and I've been a substitute teacher in the district for six years and a building substitute teacher at South Hill for the last three years. I love my job as a building sub, and I was heartbroken when I learned that I may no longer have this same position this year. I feel a part of the community and staff at South Hill. I feel loved and respected by my students and colleagues. As a building substitute, I'm at the school every day, willing to fill any position necessary. My ability to be flexible, working in any role, and my knowledge of our students make me an asset for the school community. There is never a day when a building sub does not cover at least one teacher and often several staff members. We often cover lunch and recess duties when we can, and this is a daily need at our school. By being a part of the school community, we get involved in helping organize school events and activities. We participate in PLC meetings and in-school trainings. For the last three years, I've planned and taught an extended-day math program for fifth grade students. This year, I was asked to take over a class where the teacher had left in November, and they couldn't find a long-term sub to cover. The students had had a very inconsistent beginning of the year with multiple teachers and were weeks behind in their academic work. I took on the role of classroom teacher from January until June and all the responsibilities and planning that that position requires, and was able to provide the stability, love, and instruction that those students needed. As a building substitute teacher, we are also asked to cover aides who have difficulty finding coverage, as they can be some of the more challenging positions to fill in the school. Teachers and aides feel more comfortable leaving their students with subs who have knowledge of their students' individual and increasing needs and are familiar to their students. As a building sub, my relationships and daily communication with classroom teachers and specialists are crucial to helping our students be successful. I provide consistency for students and teachers and make it easier on office staff in the morning who can count on me to fill a last-minute position. I'm invested in my school community as a building substitute teacher, and the higher compensation that comes with this challenging role has made this level of commitment possible. At the last board meeting, you asked what consequences there would be for removing us. Students will not have the familiar and trusted teachers who know them in their classroom routines stepping in to continue their learning when teachers and aides are absent. ESPs may be asked to cover absences instead of supporting the students they're assigned to, and it will be almost impossible to cover the positions needed, adding stress to staff members and admin. Without the higher compensation building subs receive, we will be forced to look elsewhere for employment and will not be available daily. I ask the board to please reject this proposal of eliminating building subs. We need more caring educators in our buildings to provide a safe and consistent learning environment for our students. Thank you for listening.
Stan Molynowitz.
Hi, I'm Stan Molynowitz. I was last year building sub at LACS, I thought, until very recently I still was. And in May, all of us got an email from Human Resources asking us to check if we're coming back, telling us we're guaranteed a job, and we were within expected earnings of no less than 90%. That turned out to be either false or grossly misleading use of the word "expected." In June, we were told, along with all the voters of the district, right before the second budget vote, that in the interest of keeping student-facing jobs, only eight and a half building or substitute positions would be eliminated. About a week and a half ago, we found out that was a lie to us and to the entire district. Sorry, not to use a prettier word, but, you know, I think we can call it a lie. We were informed, we still hadn't been informed by the district. We were told indirectly by the union that they heard that the administration was eliminating our jobs. Since then, many of us have gotten communications from our principals, our former principals, what Mike mentioned, and I got one too. I'd like you to be our go-to sub, come in every day, except when we don't need any subs, keep being, my principal said, part of our, remain part of our school home. Very pretty language, basically implying, and I've heard some people say that they've been told explicitly that they'd like us to keep working as building subs without the status of the building sub for about half of the, half of the pay. We are not going to do this if we're, I told her, if I'm going to be a per diem sub, I'll take the jobs as they come and fulfill the responsibilities of a per diem sub, which is you sign up for one teacher a day. Why is this going to, besides being a really unfair, unethical labor practice, why is this going to be so harmful not just to us, but to staff, other people have talked about the staff covering for us, for the students? We do much more than substitute for teachers. For example, I was asked by my principal to teach a class by myself all year long called Pathways to Algebra, which I did at no additional compensation. She said that's how it works. I'm not sure. Maybe you all know better than me, but I did it to help the school. We substitute for one-on-one aides. We're flexible. We sometimes substitute for three, four, even five people in a single day. Sometimes in the afternoon, we're taking on jobs that they didn't know was, you know, they would need in the morning. You can't ask that of a per diem sub. We actually teach because the teachers know what we're able to teach. When I was a per diem sub, my sub plans were usually tell them to look on Canvas and do the assignment, because I didn't know, you know, what we knew and what we don't need. I was the extra Spanish and math teacher this past year because I knew I could do it. My colleague was the extra special education, social worker, psychologist, not, you know, professional, but took on the role. We do a lot of other things. We have a special relationship with the special ed kids because we don't only sub with them, we work with them, we're with them outside of the classroom. They are going to suffer more than anything from the loss of the building subs. We have strong bonds with them, and some don't have strong bonds with many people. So I would urge you, as unfair, as harmful, as a really sleazy labor practice, to reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Brindisi.
Can you hear me okay? Hello? Hello?
We can hear you. I think we're just waiting to.
Okay.
There you go. You're up on the screen. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. My name is Mike Brindisi, or Mr. B, as the kids call me, and I'm current, well, I was formerly one of the building subs at Northeast Elementary, but hopefully by the end of this, you're going to feel that I and my colleagues are way more than just that title. First, I want to thank you guys for not only your time, but for giving us a chance to speak on our behalf and hopefully save our jobs, my family, and I appreciate that. I have two young kids. I could begin with a very long emotional speech about how much that these kids mean to me and have impacted my life and vice versa. But I know you guys are very busy, so I'm just going to cut to the chase. I was told that you're looking for a list of all the things that I or we as building subs have done in the course of a day or throughout the year in our buildings, and I'm in no way exaggerating when I say that it is almost impossible to list everything because of how much we were of assistant on a minute-to-minute basis daily and for so much more than covering teachers' classrooms. This job is less about subbing and more about providing important physical and emotional support to all the faculty and staff at all times. More importantly, building relationships and trust with kids who need it, particularly my special ed kids, who I love very much. When I think of a substitute teacher, now, I'm not trying to sound like I'm disparaging everyday substitutes. I would, I would never do that, but I think of someone who comes in for the day, they take the place of a teacher who's absent, that substitute follows a lesson plan and hopefully executes it to the best of their ability. That itself is a tough gig. You have to be constantly ready to head into a new situation in building every day. However, the building sub position, as I see it, is a position that requires so much more. Does it cost the district more than a regular sub? Sure, and it should, because this position is much more demanding physically and emotionally if you're doing it the right way, and I believe I did. And Mrs. Workman spent a lot of time at Northeast and could possibly speak on that. So, when this is done, I want you all to feel that it's worth every penny that the district is paying, and I beg you to take five minutes and ask two or three teachers at Northeast and at these other buildings what we mean to them as building subs, and I can assure you, they would agree that it's like cutting off one of their arms or legs. And I know that sounds dramatic, but it's true. Here's a small list of things that I've done on a daily basis that I could think of very quickly. My favorite part of the day, standing out in front of the building and greeting these kids and getting a high five and a hug and a "hey, Mr. B." Filling in for classroom teachers when they have personal or family emergencies or have to go home sick, have a sick child at home, or whatever would cause them to leave early. Working one-on-one with children with special needs ranging from basic to extreme. This could include assisting them with academics, sitting and playing with them, taking them on breaks, helping diffuse an aggressive or dangerous situation, covering CSE meetings every Tuesday, bouncing from classroom to classroom with five minutes in between, and you're switching subjects and age groups on the fly. And the teachers feel comfortable leaving us, leaving for meetings because of our relationship with the students and being familiar in the building. I went on, I DJed the school dance. I hosted bingo night. The fifth grade invited me on their field trip because they love me. Covering recess and lunch duties to make sure students are supervised. I worked one-on-one with a student with autism when their aide took a week for three, leave for three weeks. This student thrived during this time, and the classroom teacher said she'd never seen her work harder in class. Other things I did outside the classroom, I could go on forever, but I only have three minutes. I know I'm missing one important thing here, but I think you're getting the gist of it, and that is, yeah, as of right now, I'm unemployed and I'm scared to death. I have a family to support, but I'm thinking more about the children who are affected by this because we're not just substitute teachers. We are a part of that school. We are a part of that community. And again, if we're doing our job right, we're providing a safe place and a friend that they can come to with anything. There have been countless times where students were having a very serious situation, and they specifically sought one of our building subs out, or me, because of the relationship we have. So with that, I just want to say thank you for your time. I do appreciate you giving us a chance to fight back for our jobs. But I really do ask you to reconsider this. I don't beg for anything, but I just ask you to really reconsider for the sake of us, but more importantly, for the sake of the children. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Armin Hurek.
Good evening. My name is Armin Hurek. I'm a librarian at Ithaca High School, and I do appreciate the opportunity to advocate for the retention of the IHS building subs. The exemplary team of IHS building subs has for many years been proven, have proven their expertise as a stabilizing force which reinforces student behavioral expectations and supports the building staff and administrative team in so many ways. Their impact goes far beyond their critical fail-to-fill role, stepping in at a moment's notice to cover teachers' absences, as you've been hearing. Building subs have great familiarity with the school culture, and their willingness to be flexible in a high-knee situation makes them invaluable staff members. They have proven they're worth time and again, and even volunteer their time advising clubs, delivering food to supplement the IHS community market, and advocate for all students. I routinely witness building subs working one-on-one with students struggling with academics as well as social and emotional challenges. They apply their wide-ranging skills throughout the day and have been an enormous support to our library staff during our own occasional staffing challenges when multiple staff members are out. They are always eager to assist, and their years of experience makes them invaluable in times of need. Building subs even volunteer their time chaperoning dances, volunteering in volunteering evening and weekend hours. My library colleague, Rachel McDonald, runs two outreach programs that rely on building staff support, the Community Closet and the Community Market. Listen to these figures. The Community Closet had 1,600 student visits last school year, and students accessed free clothing, shoes, and toiletries. During their unassigned periods, building subs volunteered their help with donations, stocking, and most crucially, supervising students in the space. This is a critical need since parent volunteers cannot supervise students. Students who access the Community Closet feel safe and supported when their urgent needs are immediately met. The Community Market serves an average of 893 people in 241 households every month since its inception in October of last year. Shoppers include newly arrived refugee families, students experiencing homelessness, and those in generational poverty. Our wonderful building subs have regularly assisted library staff members by unloading delivery trucks, stocking shelves, refrigerators, and freezers, then distributing orders two or three times a week. Cuts to the IHS building sub position will negatively impact access to these resources which our students and families have come to rely upon. I urge you to consider the cuts, to reconsider the cuts to the IHS building subs. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Jenke.
Hello, my name is Scott Janke.
Hello, my name is Scott Jankey. I'm a parent of two children within the school district. I came here to talk about a different topic. I was not expecting to hear all about our substitute teachers in our buildings actually having issues because I sat through all the budget meetings last year. Well, I guess from April onwards. And the school board had continued to told us that this was your budget. This wasn't the administrator's budget. This was your budget. And so for us to hear that up on the screens, time and time again, we saw what the proposed cuts were going to be and to hear something differently, I do feel lied to. I feel lied to as a parent here within the school district. I know, sitting around the table with my two children, I hear time and time again about the difference, you know, building subs because I know them by name. Mike definitely is one of those building subs that I hear about all the time around our dinner table. And as he said, he volunteers his extra time. He is a part of our Northeast community. So it's very disheartening to hear that. And so I hope all of you really get out and let the parents know and let the community know really what is going on. And hopefully that this can be resolved quickly for us and for our communities themselves. My ask here actually tonight was around a different topic, like I said. And it's really for the policy committee to really take on the issue of cell phones in our classrooms and in our buildings. Imagine a school where focused creativity and meaningful interaction flourish, where students are fully engaged in their learning and in the relationships they build. This is what our schools can be when we consider the idea of keeping cell phones out of the classroom. Governor Hochul has recognized the importance of this issue and has proposed eliminating cell phones in school across New York State. Her initiative stems from a growing concern that these devices are not only distracting the students, but are also hindering their academic progress and social development. By removing cell phones, the classrooms we can create are more conducive environment for learning, where students can fully concentrate on their studies, engage more deeply with their peers and teachers. Governor Hochul's proposal is a step toward ensuring that this, that our schools remain spaces dedicated to education and personal growth. We've already seen examples in New York State with this. One of our school districts, the Skowhary Central School District, actually took this on and eliminated cell phones two years ago. Based off of what they have indicated, teachers and administrators report that students are more focused, engaged and present in the classroom. Without the constant distractions of their phones, students are participating more in discussions, collaborating more effectively on group projects, and even performing better academically. The Skowhary Central School District is a setting example for how our limiting cellphone use can enhance our learning environment and help students reach their full potentials. We all know that cell phones are a valuable tool, but we also need to make sure that we have restrictions on that tool for our youth within our classrooms. By keeping cell phones out of our classrooms, we are not taking away that tool, but we are rather giving our students the gift of focus, engagement and real human connection. Let's create an environment where learning is the priority, where students can grow intellectually and socially without distractions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Raphael Chamberlain.
Hello, thank you. I'm Raphael Chamberlain. I am the Vice President of the ITA and a second grade teacher at Northeast. We, the ITA Cabinet, would like to express our support for the continuation of building substitutes across all buildings in our district. Building subs have become valued members of our school staff and our school communities, some of them spending years establishing relationships and rapport with the students in our buildings. Being in the same school every day, they get to know our student populations and make connections with them. There is trust there, and with that trust comes a strong and functioning school community. Students, especially students from our most vulnerable population, struggle with changes to the daily routine and some do not adjust to daily substitutes well. So having a building substitute, that familiar face is a key to the continuation of learning when a member of the staff is absent. While we understand the financial situation of the district, we understand that the budget, we understood that the budget changes would be focused on non-student facing positions. These are student facing positions that are currently being discussed. If the issues with coverage that we have been experiencing continue, more and more teachers will be pulled from their valuable planning time to cover someone else's class. That means that they are losing time to plan lessons, analyze data and tailor the learning experiences for their own classes. Having a building substitute in the school means that if a per diem substitute is not available, then a skilled and familiar educator can step up for the day instead of a patchwork of different teachers throughout the school day. Please keep our building substitutes where they belong, in our building and in our community. And on a personal note, you know, as a teacher, when I'm sick, when there's an emergency at home, you know, I weigh the needs of my classroom and my students as well. And having a building sub has personally helped me to make that choice that supports my needs, my health and my peace of mind, also knowing that the students will have a familiar face. Thank you.
Thank you. Julia Payne, are you with us? Okay. Then that is the end of the people we have signed up for.
Okay. Thanks, everybody, for coming and speaking tonight. Now we'll move to board responses.
I'll second Adam's appreciation for your coming and speaking with us. First, I'd like to say to Carol Cedarholm, I have personally seen how love those letters is effective and beautifully done. And I will try to find $850 for us to keep it on our website, even if it's my own check. So thank you for letting us know about the issue. And I hope we can bring it up at curriculum soon to talk about in more detail, either as an adjunct to really great reading or to something else. So thanks for coming. Let's see, there was another one here. We're going to be talking more about cell phones and cell phones in the school. I think it's something there's a great deal of support for both on the board and in the community. And it does, however, require some more discussion so that we don't unwittingly do something that is against what we would hope to accomplish. So if you'll give us the grace of a few more weeks or months to talk about that so that we can set up a program that works for everyone, that will also, will that be in curriculum? Or where will we be talking about?
Policy.
Policy. Thank you. That will be in the policy committee meetings for those of you who follow that. Regarding the building subs, this is a very tough one. We've read all your emails. We've listened to your, listened to your argument and they're very compelling. I don't think anyone on the board feels like the building subs haven't provided an extremely valuable service and that the people filling those positions have been stellar. That isn't the issue. The issue is where do budgets, where do budget cuts come from? And that is something that we continue to talk about and continue to look at. But be assured that there is in no way a sense that the building subs have not fulfilled their jobs and done that beautifully. So thank you again for coming.
Additional responses?
As we move things around, thanks to each and every individual who came and spoke, especially and also those who are here, present. Thank you, Carol, for love those letters and reminding us about it because I remember when it was formed and I remembered the different pictures connected with each letter. And as you stated, definitely culturally responsive and which was a transformation from what was before. So I too, like Jill, this would be, I guess this is going to be further discussion at the curriculum committee or we can, we as board members could investigate further with the team to just look into this. I'm not sure if a board member could actually give money towards something, so I'd be careful about that. But that's Jill's statement, not mine.
You're not going to share it with me?
There are certain things we as board members should be doing and should not be doing. So. And thank you about the reminder about the cell phones. Scott, it was brought up back in June by the ITA president at that meeting. And what I stated to her is what I will state here too, is that I agree that we shouldn't have that distraction and we should be able to focus within the classroom. But this is also a community of choice. We, and if we can at least talk to our neighbors, talk to PTAs and start to get parents to have more decision and connection and conversation with their students that they should not be taking the cell phones to school or even pulling it out during the classroom. It's going to start there. It should start there. Because I've, I know I grew up with my children where they didn't have cell phones when they were in elementary school. They didn't get it until later on. But sometimes we within this community with the choices that we want, we encourage our students. So how, what do we need to do in our neighborhoods, at PTAs and other community meetings to just talk to our children and pull it from them? We can do, it can be a policy here, but we have to work in partnership too with parents, caregivers and community members. So thank you for that. And we look to further discussion at the policy meetings. Thank you all.
I just want to echo the same thank you to everyone for coming out tonight and for speaking on behalf of the issues that you care about and for all those that are here in support of those who spoke because there are many more people in the room than there are that spoke tonight. So thank you. Thank you all for being here. And thank you to all of the building subs. I loved, I loved reading your emails and learning about all the incredible things that you're doing in schools and certainly have the opportunity to, to see that happening in our school as well. You know, when we have strong adults in buildings, it creates positive results and is really exciting to see. I would love to put 5,000 more people in every building and I'm sure, I'm not really supposed to say that, but it does come down to budgets and money and I am aware of that. And while I know personally the experiences that I've had and the things that I've read now, we are continuing to have the tough conversations that Jill talked about and where we can afford cost savings and where we cannot and are continuing to have those conversations. But I truly do appreciate you all being here and sharing, sharing all of your experiences. Mr. Jankey, we talked about cell phones at the last policy meeting just last week and had a member of the community come in and speak in support of bearing them. I, from a, from a personal standpoint, I am very eager to have this conversation, share your concerns and have been reading all of the research and trying to learn about what other school districts are doing and what the challenges have been and what the successes have been. I do, I do agree that it needs to be a partnership with the community. I also, Sean and I spoke at the policy meeting about really wanting to get feedback from the community to make sure that this wouldn't be any sort of unilateral decision that we made and that there are, of course, concerns on both sides and lots of kind of procedural things that we would need to think about as a way to do this, if we were ever to do it, to be able to do it carefully and thoughtfully and in a way that wasn't going to overburden teachers to the point where they were no longer teaching and instead yelling at people to put their cell phones away all the time. So lots of things to continue to think about, but certainly a high priority issue for us to continue to talk about, hopefully for many more weeks and not many more months, is my hope. Carol, just want to thank you. I, I have researched and studied the science of reading for many, many years and am not as familiar with your reading program. And so as a member of the policy committee, excuse me, the curriculum committee, would be really excited to be able to have you come so that I could learn more about that and how it kind of differs from, from some of the other programs that lean into that more. I think, I think that's all. And again, just thank you all for being here.
Hi, Erin Croyle. I don't have a nameplate today and also for anyone listening, so you can hear me. I mean, I don't want to be redundant of all the great things my colleagues have said. I just want to add, for the building subs, y'all are amazing. And I hope you know how much we see you and how hard you work. And we definitely need more. I mean, the fact is that this year we are in a crisis. Taking $6 million out of a budget that was proposed is a lot. And I, I can't stress enough that the budget we agreed was the tax cap budget and we're grateful to have that, but that is, that does not even keep up with the price of inflation. And so it's going to be a painful year. And I don't want to dwell on that, but what I do want to say is that you have people here that care very much. We want to look for ways to create revenue. And when I hear these stories about the building subs, I can't help but think like, why don't we have floating educators as an official, you know, role in every building? Because that sounds like that is a permanent position that we should have. And so, you know, instead of focusing on the negative, and it's not that I hear your concerns and there are immediate concerns, which of course will be handled by admin and what, all of the things. Looking to the future, I mean positively, if we can work together and look at streaming revenue and look at the hope we have for hearing these stories and the positions that we need to serve our kids better. I think we start to focus on that as a board on how to have money to bring positions back. Thank you.
I'll just add a couple of things. The board members at the table have already addressed a lot of the things that I might have also said. In terms of the reading program, I just want to say a couple of things. Choosing culturally responsive programs that also reflect the science of reading, you know, is the goal of all the reading programs that we're adopting. We have done some work adopting some programs for reading for K to two. It was the goal last year to adopt a common curriculum for reading across grades three through five last year. We did not completely complete that, but our goal is to do that by the fall of this year because we're still reviewing some of the programs and we didn't reach consensus on one yet. In the curriculum committee, we're going to talk more about newly implemented reading programs. And we're going to be looking at outcome data as that outcome data comes in in the upcoming years to track progress. So definitely stay tuned for some of those conversations at curriculum. Hope to see some of you there. Only one other thing I wanted to address was that one of the goals of the budget was to reduce administrative costs by 22%. That was what we talked about last year. And in fact, those reductions were made and there was priority placed on reducing administrative costs as one aspect of the reduction. That doesn't equal $7 million of cuts, which is basically how much we have to cut this year. But I just wanted to make that statement about that there had been some reduction in administrative costs as had been discussed with the board. Any other comments or responses today? Okay. Well, thanks again, everybody, for coming to public comment. It's very much appreciated. We're going to move on to our next agenda item. We have student. Okay, I just saw that here. Okay, so our next item is going to be the approval of the consent agenda. And I'd like to entertain motions.
I'll move that. Motion to approve all consent agenda items listed in consent agenda. Consideration of accounts, personnel report, students and minutes of previous meetings as presented.
I second.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. That is passed unanimously. Let's see. Okay. Our next item is our superintendent report by Dr. Brown.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity, Dr. Kent Weiss, to share. And I'll be very brief, but I just wanted to underscore and highlight the recommendations that you approved this evening for the appointments of several administrators that will be new to some buildings. I think one or two may be in the building this evening. And these folks have a long history in our school district. Uh, I think one or two may be in the building this evening. Um, and these folks have a long history in our school district. Um, they began as students. Um, they've held teaching positions. They've been excellent teachers and have proven themselves as administrators and now transitioning into new and very important roles. We have Angela Knight, who will be an associate principal at DeWitt Middle School. Um, Stephen Anderson, who will be, uh, an educator for inclusion at both Boynton and DeWitt. And I think Tara, I saw Tara, Tara, uh, who's been with us for many years as a student, as a teacher and as an administrator, transitioning into a new administrative role at Boynton Middle School. So just so happy that, uh, you all are transitioning to those roles and excited to work with you in those new capacities. Thank you for being here. Uh, and just a, a shout out to all of the, uh, students uh, and educators who've been participating in our summer professional development. Uh, while we have had to scale back our professional development offerings this summer, we still have a pretty robust program, including, uh, what we've done the last two days where we, um, hosted, um, educated from all over the country, and we had some of the most talented educators in the world here sharing with us. So just a shout out for the folks who made time in their schedules to be with us, um, this summer and the ones who've been leading those efforts as well. And one last thing, if I can take this opportunity, um, because I, yeah, typically don't, uh, attempt to, because it's not my, my meeting, it's your meeting. But at times when I hear things in public comment, I feel compelled to respond to. And I'm looking forward to the ongoing conversations. Um, as folks know, we will be meeting throughout the month of August and we go into September. And our budget development process, which we will outline later in the meeting, is an ongoing year-long process. And we've needed to make some, uh, decisions that are outside of our normal processes and timelines, including making a reduction of $7 million, um, beginning in June. Uh, so I want folks to, um, and particularly as I proposed a budget back in April of last year, it was one that I said at the time where I felt would meet the needs of our learners. One, frankly, over 14 years, I've been a part of building and developing as I look at some of the most talented educators I've ever worked with, serving in a role that I frankly started as, as an educator, a building sub every day, and I loved it. Um, one that my mother had served in, um, every day for 46 years. Um, and ultimately not making very much money doing so, but she loved it. So it's a role that I've always admired and appreciated and loved, and one that I've advocated for since I've been an educator, as a principal, as a central office administrator in Virginia and here. And yes, it took me a decade to make sure we included that role into the budget because I see the value in it. And I see the people who serve in it and I love you. And I propose that we keep it. And you know, the pandemic funding came to us at an interesting time and we were able to, um, use those funds that came to us from the federal government at the time to do some things we had always wanted to do. And we were able to work with unions and union leadership to do things outside of the, uh, typical contracts. We were able to do MOAs and do things because we were in the midst of emergencies. Other things like giving food to kids for free, um, other things like giving devices to kids for free, which we had been arguing about for decades, one of those times. And all of a sudden, because of a pandemic, we were able to do it immediately, including doing things like staffing our buildings in ways that we had dreamed of. So let's be clear, we, you don't, you don't have to sell us on the value of a role that we've all wanted for many, many years and we had to do so. And last year, um, beginning in May, we heard from our community that they, as I said, I wanted to absorb some of the hits to our federal funding going away. Um, that's why we proposed the budget that we did, that was going to keep up with inflation and compensate our folks in the ways in which we wanted to be compensated. And I'll say it one more time, but I said I would never say it again. We wanted to compensate folks 20% more over three years. I want to remind folks that we wanted to do that with that first budget. And we heard loud and clear from folks, uh, that was too much and we can't afford it. And to cut administrators, which we did. And as we set at this table, our adjustments to that budget, because we weren't adding new things. We were simply rolling it over from year to year. Um, they said, you got to cut more because you can't get $7 million from just administrators. So as we had had to make some very difficult and challenging decisions, later, because typically in June, I'm going to graduation ceremonies and I'm celebrating in elementary schools as young people are moving up. But this last June, we was in this room hearing from folks who wanted us to cut and cut people and cut positions and reduce. And we were spending too much, we were making too much money. That's what we heard in June last year. So we made some adjustments. We made those adjustments in the summer. What many folks wanted in our buildings, where we didn't have time to be with staffs, when the board wasn't meeting. So I'm looking forward to the ongoing conversation because this is just the start of the conversation because budgeting is a year-round, multi-year process. It took me 10 years to get the role in and we had to cut overnight. So let's be clear, I don't, if you're going to come and talk about this work and we want to engage in the dialogue, I'm asking folks to not question our integrity, not being in good faith, not question the process because the process is jacked up. And as our board president has said here, we're making decisions that aren't always educationally sound because we're doing it with a sense of urgency and we're doing it outside of our normal processes. So we want to engage in the dialogue. Let's do that. But let's do that with all, assuming the best intentions and do it in a way that's going to be sustainable for this organization and this community that's asked us to cut significantly. So again, I typically don't step outside of, uh, what I have seen on the agenda and I'm supposed to be speaking to, but I feel the energy in the room and I see people I love that I've seen you serve young people for many, many years here. And I want to acknowledge that and that I'm going to do everything I can to support you. But we're making some tough decisions, um, that will impact us all. Thank you, Dr. Grant Rice, for this opportunity.
Okay, our next item, uh, on the agenda is a resolution to establish Legislative Advocacy Advisory Council. I'm not sure if there's anything that we need to discuss about that. If not, I can entertain motions.
Sorry, I don't know if we need to motion before we can discuss. I can't remember, don't we? So, um, motion to approve the establishment of a Legislative Advocacy Advisory Council for the 2022, 2020, sorry, 2024, haven't slept much, y'all, uh, 2025 school year. We need a second.
Second.
Okay, moved by Erin, seconded by Emily.
And I just wanted to point, I'm like, I'm fine with this. Um, but I believe there's a typo in the last line because it's be it resolved, the board establishes an advisory council on revenue exploration. So I think that's a typo, like left over from a copy paste, right?
That was the other.
The other one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if we were to change that to the proper name, uh, resolution, I'm sorry, advisory council, sorry, legislated, if we edit the final line to say Legislative Advocacy Advisory Council, then we can approve it, I believe.
I, I move that we amend the resolution as proposed.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Jill, seconded by Erin. Okay.
This is something we've talked about for years, um, having a committee that, that looks into what other people are doing, what the state legislature is doing, what, what kinds of legislation will be affecting the school district as, um, as in the coming years. So, um, I think in the last few years, we've kind of resisted doing this because no one was really eager to, um, take on another committee, but it's my understanding that this year there are at least a few people who are interested in, in being part of a Legislative Advocacy Advisory Council. So the fact that we calling it an advisory council, I believe that means that we would have people other than board members on that. Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right. So that's an important thing to say. This would not just be a committee of the board. This would be a committee with board members, but including community members and other interested people.
And how many board members do we have who have participated?
Currently we know that it is just me, um, but I believe there was interest from others.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So, I mean, we've talked about this for years. We had it not long ago. Um, we've had issues with, uh, ebbs and flows of board members and not having a full board. But this, this year, I think it's especially important because there are a lot of initiatives that can help with revenue, with, um, communicating with, um, NICEIT and, uh, local legislators and taking it on a state level. Uh, uh, so we already kind of have a working plan. And once the board is, uh, sorry, once this council is established, we can bring forth more information at the next meeting.
Okay. Um, okay. So it's already moved and seconded, so we can, oh, yeah, go ahead, sir.
We had a motion to approve the establishment and we had a motion to amend the wording. Which one are we?
I have a, I have a new motion. I motion to approve the establishment of this committee with the amended, um, line at the be it resolved final sentence. I hope that's sufficient.
We're getting into a horrible mess. We, we should.
This is why Sean needs to be.
That we, we should table, we should be tabling the, the first and second. Or withdraw, thank you, withdraw the first and second motions and then.
Okay, well, withdraw our first and second motions. And then do you want to, should we, do we need to refresh our, our motion once again? Why don't you say it one more time and then we can second vote on it?
I'll say it better this time.
Okay.
Motion to approve the establishment of a Legislative Advocacy Advisory Council for a 2024, 2025 school year with the be it resolved line amended to reflect the proper name of this council.
Second.
Okay, moved by Erin, seconded by Jill. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? None. Okay, that passes unanimously. And we can move on to item 10.2, um, which is the Quality Coach Line Lawsuit Resolution.
I, I move to authorize and direct the Ithaca City School District Legal Council to commence litigation against the Quality Coach Line Incorporated, DBA Troy Williams Transit Company Incorporated.
Second.
Okay, moved by Karen, seconded by Jill. Discussion?
We talked about this in executive session because it's pending, um, pending legal issues and, um, I think, um, I think we should vote to approve this.
Other discussion, comments? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the resolution passes unanimously. Okay, next we move on to item 10.3, which is a resolution to approve expenditures for board members to attend NISBA's annual convention. Um, and I'd be glad to entertain motions.
I could move my names in there. I'll move. Um, I move to approve expenditures for board members Erin Croyle, Emily Workman, and Karen Yearwood to attend the NISBA, which is New York State School Board Association Annual Convention in New York City, New York, October 20th through the 22nd of this year. And I'm moving with a correction that in the resolve section, it has to state the correct city and state. It has Buffalo. At the moment, it will be corrected to New York, New York.
Second.
Okay, moved by Erin, seconded by Emily. Any discussion?
Oddly enough, I'm going to vote against this resolution. New York City is very expensive. I'm sure it would be an excellent convention, but I think this is the wrong time for us to spend a lot of money to go to a convention.
I actually struggled with even wanting to go and checked with colleagues. I didn't get response, but I just want to, for anyone wondering, questioning, there is money in the budget allowed, allocated for board members to attending, um, conventions, trainings, et cetera. I also want to stress while looking through, um, the convention, there are opportunities for networking, for learning about how to produce revenue. This is, that was something that was really important to me. We can do our jobs better as board members. So this is investing in the work that we're doing. But yes, I, I, I was uneasy about even saying I wanted to do this.
And also that, um, I had attended the convention last year and I was grateful for that opportunity because, um, due to the connections that we've had through Amanda Verba with the state and the electrification of the buses, that was a major topic. There was also a topic about superintendent evaluation, which I brought back to the board and about our development as board members too. And at that convention, I had also, and I shared this with the board even up to today, that I met a group from BOSI's in Suffolk County, that's in Long Island area, that they even stated about the diversity symposium that Dr. Brown had referenced today. They had attended and have been attended that symposium since 2017 and the impact that has had with the work they do in BOSI's in their area. So it's, it's networking opportunity, but as board members and especially as a new board member too, to be able to see what is happening across New York State and what we as board members have signed up to sign on to do here.
Any additional comments or discussion? Okay, then we can move it on to a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, then that resolution does not pass.
Um, can we motion to revote when we, next week or another time or to, how does that? Also, are the hotels refundable if the motion does not pass? Do we know this?
Well, this vote doesn't count because there's only four and according to the, um, policy, we have to have five. So we can put it on and.
Put it on another agenda.
Agenda for, let's say, um, August 27th.
Okay, well, wait, I just have a question about that. It doesn't count because I thought as long as we have a quorum, then we can vote and then in order for something to pass, you need five yeses. But I didn't think that there was any other rule about that.
It, the motion failed. However, it can come back on another agenda.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, um, okay. So it can return on another agenda. We can, we can vote again, but as for tonight, it did not pass. Um, okay, moving on to, uh, item number 10.4. Um, this is an item about acting principals. Um, we have a few different, um, iterations of this that we're going to vote on, but this is for acting principal resolution for Ithaca High School. And I can entertain motions.
I'll move this. Motion to approve acting principal resolution for Ithaca High School. Be it resolved in the event that Mr. Trumble, principal of the Ithaca High School, is not physically present in the Ithaca High School on one or more days for portion, or portions thereof during the 24, 25 school year. Ms. Martha Hardisty, Associate Principal, be appointed acting principal for all short-term student discipline matters pursuant to the section 3214 of the New York State Education Law. And be it further resolved in the event that Ms. Martha Hardisty, Associate Principal, is unavailable or otherwise unable to be physically present in the Ithaca High School to serve as acting principal in the absence of Mr. Jason Trumbull, principal, Mr. Patrick Hovey, Associate Principal, is hereby designated to be acting principal for all student discipline matters requiring short-term student discipline actions pursuant to section 3214 of the New York State Education Law. Be it further resolved that in the event that Mr. Jason Trumbull, principal, is not physically present in the Ithaca High School on one or more days or portions thereof during the 2024, 25 school year, the operational acting principal shall be in the following order, Ms. Martha Hardisty, Mr. Patrick Hovey. And I so move.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Erin. Excellent reading. Um, any discussion? Okay, in the absence of discussion, we can move it to a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the resolution passes unanimously. Um, moving on to item 10.5, Acting Principal Resolution for Boynton Middle School.
Be it resolved in the event that Ms. Lauren Wright, principal of the Boynton Middle School, is not physically present in the Boynton Middle School on one or more days or portions thereof during the 2024, 2025 school year. Tara Kaiser, Kaiser, Assistant Principal, Associate Principal, sorry, be appointed acting principal for all short-term student discipline matters pursuant to section 3214 of the New York State Education Law, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, moved by Jill, seconded by Emily. Discussion? Okay, uh, we can move it to a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that resolution also passes unanimously. Moving on to item 10.6, acting principal resolution for Dewitt Middle School. Entertain motions.
I'm going for a trifecta here. Motion to approve acting principal resolution for Ithaca High School. No, for Dewitt Middle School. Be it resolved in the event that Mr. Daniel McGrath. Principal of the Dewitt Middle School is not physically present in the Dewitt Middle School on one or more. Or portions thereof, one or more days or portions thereof during the 20242025 school year. Angela Knight, Associate Principal, be appointed acting principal. For all short term student discipline matters pursuant to section thirty two fourteen of the New York State Education Law and I so move.
Second.
Okay, moved by Jill, seconded seconded by Emily. Discussion. Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that motion also passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to item 10.7 designation of an official newspaper. I'll also take motions.
Motion to approve the designation of the Ithaca Journal as the official newspaper for the City School District, Ithaca, New York. During the school year 20242025 for the publication of all legal notices. And such other data as is required to be published by law and for which the same may be qualified to act.
Second.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Emily. Any discussion?
Just for background for any newbies that might not know this and. Correct me if not regurgitating this back from my brain correctly, but the the this. There are very specific stipulations legally that it has to be the Ithaca Journal because it has to be published once weekly. The laws in my. Opinion are a little archaic and outdated because that's not how news functions anymore, but we're kind of stuck in this position to designate them. Until we can figure out how to advocate to change that, so.
And just to add to Erin that it has to be a printed newspaper as well as this was. Supposed to be finalized in the reorganization meeting in July, but we needed to look in further. Because I too am not in agreement of that periodical, but.
Any other discussion? Okay, then we can move it to a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to our penultimate agenda item, item 10.8. Plans and resource allocation for the 20242025 academic school year.
Thank you. I've been looking for a way to use the word penultimate for a couple of weeks and you just dropped it pretty easily there. I wish to invite members of my team down to help us frame this part of the discussion, which I see as a. The first of a two part presentation, but a part of an ongoing dialogue. Ms. Verba, Ms. Grover, Ms. Delin, you can come on down. And we have been working on a document that will be public facing. We hope to upload to our website. And continue to add to this particular document that sort of outlines the process we've been using to develop our budget. The process we have used to develop the budget that we're now implementing. Where information about those budgets are summaries of board meetings, videos, clips. As I heard some to some, I heard a little bit tonight that some of this work isn't being communicated to everyone at all times. And I want to show the ways in which we're attempting to communicate it and ask for any additional feedback from folks about how to do more. And as we do this, the second iteration of this, the second part of this presentation, I'm hoping that we can give. Even more details about where the shifts are going to occur because I, if I'm understanding correctly, the board may be meeting at least one more time in August before young people show up. And possibly two. So as we develop this budget together, as I heard tonight, yes, it is the board's budget, but it's our budget. It's our community and our tax dollars. So it's our budget that we're working on together and budgets should be evolving. Budgets should be flexible. They are budgets. And they're spending plans and a boiler could go down tomorrow. Twenty five students could show up at Northeast Elementary School for fifth grade. Anything can happen. So if anyone who thinks that a budget is set in stone, the moment you put it out initially, they just don't understand the nature of $168 million budget. So with that, I would love for our team to walk through the document. I think we can put up some of it. Just sort of and step back to how this process started, where we are, where the information is. And then we will, I'll ask to be pushed pause where we start to get into very minutia details about exactly where we're going to be shifting. But also highlight where the budgets, the board priorities are and how we're making some of these decisions. So I don't know which one of us wishes to start. I mean, it's either Zach or Amanda to start with that document and we'll put it up on the screen.
I can start off. So something that's come up time after time in our discussions, if you've sort of followed the. The budget process is budgets are representations of of values and. And your goals and priorities, but of course, as everyone can attest over the past several months, particularly in our spring and summer. You know, there's been a lot of a lot in flux and a lot of turmoil. So you know, just time to kind of take a moment to review. We started out last fall, actually starting a lot of our budgetary conversations. And during that time, we we went through and we reviewed. Everything from staffing models, the history in our HR committees, we looked at the history of. Of our staffing models, we looked at the cost of benefits, we looked at the cost of. Things like retirement and what that means, you know. For our teachers, but then also what that means in terms of district responsibilities. And we also spent a lot of time looking at long range fiscal planning. We had meetings in. November, even sort of looking out forecasting ahead and, you know, trying to figure out. Where we're headed. You also heard a lot of talk about. Our goals and priorities of how to meet the needs of impending negotiations with different association groups and what we were trying to do there. So over the course of the year that we then moved into in the winter and in the spring, we started looking at. Things like the cost of BOSs, things, the cost of different departments, the implications, the needs, the curricular. Implications of different programming. Then we did departmental level presentations, things like technology budget. Special education budget. And sort of went through all the different pieces. So that's, and then sort of we got into the spring and really took on head on the actual budgetary process. So that's sort of like the gets us to last, last March or. May, March, May and April. What did I miss?
May go.
Yes.
I'm going to jump in. Okay, so thank you, everyone for having us. I I want to start by saying. That as an organization, I am very grateful to serve a board that centers students. To serve a community that centers students again and again. So that's at the heart of budget development. How are we centering the babies? And that goes, that's a year long process with multi-year implications. And so what I'm hoping for in this document that one day will be casted.
We're trying to get it up.
Is that it will create a shared understanding. So when we have to. As has been said, make shifts that are not educationally sound. But that are going to be sustainable as far as what our community will fund. We have the timeline and we have shared understanding of that timeline. Because it is important to me that. We acknowledge our educators are in this for children. I am in this for children. And that timeline and a shared understanding of how we develop that is really important. So I was, this is particularly helpful for me as someone who was on medical leave throughout the spring. And this document that is going to be in your board docs has a hyperlink to the board summaries and those meetings. That will show when the specific conversations happened. As well as, wow, how did we get here? So we heard from the community in late April. That this original budget is just not sustainable for us. Again, it was a full, a full room. And so we had to make some decisions and reductions even before the budget went to voters. I think that's really important. That we honor that timeline and that have that shared understanding that what people voted on and democracy spoke and it said, no, we can't fund that. Was a second version of the budget that was developed. And after that did not pass, we moved again to the vote that our community has has passed. So you can see this will have the the videos that are linked to when the budget conversation started. The recording and then the summary, which I think is just useful for us. To be able to to go to which I am very grateful for a budget and that our community is supporting what it is.
So you see the hyperlinks again, we're. We've begun a document that sort of captures what's happened and how we got here, along with some key talking points to just have a common understanding about where we've been and where we are. Questions, thoughts, reactions or suggestions from the board at this moment.
I know, that's very hard to see.
Can't see. There we go. Do page one and two, Emily, and if we can do three, just to highlight for folks. And if this doesn't work, we can just take it down.
Emily, do you mind? May I ask you to just open up because it's hard with these hyperlinks. I just want us to go through clicking on one, the all board summaries, for example, because that's a. Those are published regularly and I think that's a great resource for the community, our community. Be able to reference if you're not here, what is, what takes place and what are. The topics discussed at board meetings. Okay.
I guess this is a document that can go live this evening. And one question I would have is, are there other things the board would wish for us to put into a document? That sort of captures where we've been, where we are right now. As we know, we're going to get to even more specifics about particular areas that are connected to the board priorities at the future, at the next meeting. And maybe we leave it on that 20242025 budget priorities because that will inform our next conversation. Most likely our next meeting when we present some things that we have had to shift and some decisions we've had to make. One of the questions that came up at a previous board meeting was how are we making these decisions? And I direct folks to this document. This, these are the priorities. So we're making decisions based on what was established as priorities last year. Got questions?
Yeah, I think it's a very good part one. It's good to have the information and be able to share it with the community. You know, as a good starting point and then maybe talking some more, you know, at our next meeting about some of the more specific areas would also be really informative.
Yeah.
So it seems like a good place to start.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've always had the information. I just want to correct right there that statement. I'd really like to encourage my board colleagues as well as the community and for even myself as I continually go on our website. Because I'm trying to figure out what what else, and I may not know what else is needed because I see it there. The information we started like in finance committee last year, there was a whole breakdown of PowerPoint of like, here is the budget process. And this is what we're going to do over the year. And I saw that even from the year before when I was not on the finance committee. So if there's. Something else that's needed that we need to identify, let's definitely say, as well as the community could. Put in, let's talk if there's something missing. Because I I've seen it there. And if there's further explanation, if you want, we have graphs, we have the bells and the whistles, we have. We have quite a few things and now what we need now is more money, but we don't have that at this moment, but. So and before anyone comments about what else is needed, please go on the website. And just check the budget development section. To just see what is there and if there's clarification needed because we've we've even, our district clerk has provided summaries to every board meeting. So there's a lot of information. It can be information overload, but not if you take the time and we all take the time to just. Read through it and digest it, come to the committee and listen. As to what is being presented, but I continue to thank the staff for outlining, as we all agree to the budget priorities. And it's now to how are we going to see it through knowing that budget and it's not just one year, but it's looking into the future and forecasting.
Yeah, I was just going to add in the, you know, the finance committee meets, you know, once a month, there are 12 meetings. So in a certain sense, not not all that many meetings for for somebody that would want to be. You know, 100% involved in the process from beginning to end. I think last year there was, you know, interest builds as the year goes on, more people show up to to later meetings. Which is not a critique of anybody who only shows up to later meetings because it's great to participate, you know, in any way that anybody wants to participate. But for those who want the full experience, you know, to be in on all the conversations, know everything that's going on with the budget. You know, from the very, very beginning, you know, it's about to kick off. And so everybody's invited to those meetings, just sort of plugging that because I think we've talked throughout the year about people feeling like. Oh, I didn't know that this happened or that happened and you will know all if you if you attend all of those those meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, so we're sort of wrapping up our agenda for tonight. We have one. Let's see, item number 11, which is other business items. Jill had brought up that there was one other business item we need to talk about tonight. Which is a resignation of one of our board members. And I had something that I was going to read, a short statement.
Why don't I? Why don't I mention it and then you can read the statement? How does that work?
That sounds great.
Okay, this is item 11.3, a discussion item. And Katie Apkar has resigned from the board. So we're once again down to an eight member board, but we do wish to thank Katie for her service over the last year. And Adam has some more particulars to add to that.
Absolutely, in terms of thanks to Katie, and I'm just going to read this, be it resolved that the Board of Education. Of the Ithaca City School District has received and hereby accepts the resignation. From the Board of Katie Apkar effective August 11, 2024. The Board would like to thank Ms. Apkar for her service to the district and greater Ithaca community. And she'll be missed.
Do we vote on that or do we just all nod?
I think we just all nod. I think, I think. Okay, any other business to discuss tonight? Okay, any other business to discuss tonight? Other discussion items?
We have on committees next week, upcoming meetings.
Yeah, which ones are coming?
Facilities and finance next week, Tuesday.
That's right. Facilities and finance will be next Tuesday, and then the following week, I believe, is the first curriculum committee meeting of the year, followed by another full board meeting that same night. Okay, well, I appreciate everybody coming tonight to the meeting, and we will adjourn the meeting at this time, and hope everybody has a nice night.